Good evening and welcome. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to Corbin County's Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustments. It's 5:00 PM on April 30th. Would everyone please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our first item on the agenda is roll call. Rocky Lennemy.
Here.
Rick Skogan.
Here.
Rebecca Best.
Here.
And Sue Maskey.
Here.
And my name is Don Hales. Our next item is to approve the minutes and findings of fact of the meeting held on April 23rd, 2020.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve those minutes.
Second? It's been moved by Rick and seconded by Rock to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chair, we do need to do a roll call vote for all. I forgot to tell you that before the meeting. We gotta do roll call for all remote meetings from here on out. I apologize for that.
Okay. So on the minutes, Sue Maskey.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Rock.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So motion carries, minutes are approved. Tonight, we have no items of old business. We have eight items of new business. When it's time for your application to be called, we will invite you in to join the meeting. At that point, we will have Jake read the request into the record. And then we'll give the applicant an opportunity to add any new information that has not been previously submitted. At that time, we will discuss any public comment that's been received and have an opportunity for the applicant to respond to that testimony. Our decision process for a land use change request, we make a recommendation to the county board. For a CUP and a variance request, we do make the final decision. We make our decisions based on our findings of fact. To help us do that, we do several things. First off, we do on sites where we physically go to the property and examine the site. Then prior to this meeting, we read each and every letter and email that has been submitted. In addition to that, we have a worksheet that we use to help summarize those findings of fact. During a land use change request, a yes or no answer to a question does not necessarily mean approval or rejection. But for a variance request, a no answer means we must deny the request. And one last item is that we do record everything, both audio and video. And with that, we're ready for our first application, which is Lloyd Bordwell.
So I'll admit to the lobby, Ron Klinker, authorized agent for Lloyd Bordwell.
Are they there? Are you there?
This is Ron, I'm here.
Okay. Is Lloyd joining you?
I don't believe so.
Okay, and your name is Ron?
Yes, Ron Klinker.
Thank you, Ron. Jake, Ron, can you give us your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Ron Klinker. I'm the environmental manager for Knife River at 4787 Shadowwood Drive in Stock Rapids.
Thank you so much. Jake, would you read the request into the record for us?
Certainly, Mr. Chair and members of the board. First applicant this evening is for Lloyd Bordwell, Knife River. Authorized agent, of course, is Ron Klinker. The address for this request is two of them, 19263 Oak Lake Road, Deerwood, Minnesota, and 19483 Orland Mine Road, also in Deerwood. This request is for an amendment to the July 15th, 2010 conditional use permit to allow for an expansion of a G5 extractive use operation involving approximately 18 acres. That's shown on the certificate of survey dated April 23rd, 2020. This includes topsoil removal, screening equipment, crushing, washing and processing of bituminous and demolition materials, hot mix operation, ready mixed concrete plant, and stockpiling of materials. All right. Going to move down here, take a look at the certificate of survey. The certificate of survey is fairly simple in nature. We also have some diagrams of what's going on existing. I'm going to try and scroll down to that first, so you can get a good idea of what the existing operation looks like. Oh, that's got to be coming up. Do we have that, the cartoon deal?
Yeah, clearly.
All right. I just think that's... There we go, there we go. Okay. So here we are, we'll start with this map. Just showing its location. There is an existing gravel pit that, again, was approved in 2010. It essentially exists in this area. Some of it is in the Shoreland District because back in 2010, there wasn't an ordinance limiting extractive use operations within the Shoreland District. So this has been operating for quite some time. There is still a little bit to go on the east end here where they haven't extracted all of the materials. The whole road, as you can see, is proposed or is existing to the east. The new proposal is to expand on that through this shape here. However, not in the Shoreland District, which is why you see this funky little cut here on the south end, so that it's at least 1,000 feet away from this lake to the south. It's about 18 acres. It'll be at least 25 feet away from these designated wetlands that were delineated on the property. As you can see, this is the stormwater management plan, which is essentially identifying as a big hole in the ground with water going to the basin at the bottom of it. There's a lot of material in terms of what they've covered in their application. There's extensive requirements for these types of applications. Staff has reviewed it. We felt that they've met all the requirements to be at this meeting in terms of answering all the little questions, so I won't go over that unless there is any questions here. Obviously, there's not any impervious on the subject property with this proposal. We did get comments, or I'm sorry, we did get comments from Deerwood Township. They recommend approval. We got that in March. We didn't get any comments from the DNR, Lake Associations, or Highway Department. We did receive two public comments. We have one included in the packet and one was received after the publication. And we have that printed, and so you should have that comment as well. And again, just for reference, the proposal here is not to use the private road here for hauling. It would all be funneled out to the east. And with that, Mr. Chair, I can go over other things unless you think that's sufficient for now.
I think it's sufficient. Anybody else need anything? Okay. Does the applicant have any new information that has not been previously submitted?
No, Mr. Chair, nothing.
Okay, thank you. As Jake mentioned, we received two comments from the public on this. Everybody's had an opportunity to read and look at those.
I hope.
Any comments from that?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask Ron, one of the comments was that we got in our packet, something about there were supposed to be trees planted, but when I'm reading through the conditions, this is, you're supposed to create an eight-foot berm from the right-of-way coming off County Road 8 back to the west to block the line of sight from the homes lying north and south. And the berm was supposed to be covered with vegetation. Is that, was that done, Ron?
The berms are built, and I do not recall. I mean, I was in on the 2010 meetings and stuff, and I don't recall anything about us having to plant any trees.
No, yeah. I was reading through the conditions, so...
Yeah, well, and even, you know, sometimes things get said in meetings that don't make it into the conditions. So I went back and I looked through all my notes. The only thing that I can think of, again, speculation, Mr. Bordwell cut some trees in the vicinity of our plant. Down would be kind of in the, you know, the southeast corner by where the ready mixed plant is. That would have been closest to this neighbor who made those comments. So I, and I know some of the neighbors weren't too happy with Mr. Bordwell for doing that, so I don't know if that prompted this, that comment or not. But you can see, we're set back so far from basically everybody. It's pretty well screened, in my opinion.
But the berm is in?
Yes.
Okay. That's, I just wanted clarification on that.
I've driven by there, and I've noticed the berm is there. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Ron, do you have any response to any of the public, the two letters that were submitted?
I guess the only, one of the comments I would have is that, you know, talking about, you know, the neighbors, their fears and stuff. We've had, you know, typically when we go to these meetings, we ask neighbors if there's problems that, you know, usually I or Holly Brisk are at these meetings and we ask them to call us. And I've not received any complaint about the things that are on here, about the public's comments. If you, if you may, well, you may not remember, but part of the history, in 2010, after the planning commission granted us this permit, the citizens petitioned the Department of Natural Resources, or actually the Environmental Quality Board, who then determined that the Department of Natural Resources was the local government unit, or the government unit in charge of that EAW, because they had yet to issue us a water appropriations permit. So they looked at all the neighborhood concerns and everything and basically stated that, you know, no environmental assessment worksheet was needed. So I, I mean, I hate to read these things where people think that they weren't listened to when really all those concerns were looked at, not just by Knife River, but by the Department of Natural Resources. So, I mean, so if there's any questions about any of that, we'd be happy to go through that, but...
Okay, thank you. Anything else for, anybody have a question for? We did an onsite on this property. Who would like to give that report?
I will. Ron, this is Rick Skogan. I was on that onsite. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. On 4/9/2020, Don Hales, Rebecca Best, myself, and Sue Maskey, along with staff, did an onsite, and these are the observations that we came away with. We noted the wetlands have been delineated and were marked for the onsite visit. The 25-foot wetland buffer is noted on the certificate of survey per the Wetland Conservation Act Notice of Decision on 11/26/2019. We noted there are no nearby neighbors in the proposed expansion area. Access to the expansion will be through the existing access off County Road 8. Pit expansion will occur through the existing pit, not through any new access points. New expansion consists of excavation, which is located even further from County Road 8 than the current. The ready mixed plant will remain in the existing location of existing operation. No new additional ready mixed plant is proposed. And we noted you're well screened to the road and from the adjacent properties. That's what we noted, Ron.
Okay. Sue, you have anything you want to add?
No.
I don't either, okay. Any questions for anybody, the onsite people or the applicant? With that, we will go to our worksheet. Rebecca, you have any questions? I'm sorry.
No, not at this time. Thank you, thanks, Rick.
Sometimes when you're out of sight, you get out of mind, so I apologize to you.
That's okay, I'll remind you.
Okay. Question number one. Now, this is a conditional use permit application. Question number one. What impact will the proposed use have on the health, safety, and general welfare of the occupants in the surrounding neighborhood?
Mr. Chair, I would say that it would be a minimal impact. As this is an expansion of an existing G5 extractive use operation approved in 7, approved on 7/15/2010 with the conditional use permit.
Anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agreed.
Okay. Question number two. Is the proposed use able to meet with the standards of the county land use ordinance?
Mr. Chair, I would say that it is. An extractive use permit is allowed in a agricultural district with a CUP.
Anything additional?
I'd just like to add that that's per Article 10.3E of the county ordinance.
Okay. Anything else? Everybody agree with those?
Agreed.
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 I agree, I'm sorry.
Question number three. Is the proposed use consistent with the goals and policies adopted within the county's comprehensive plan?
I would say yes, it does. A comprehensive plan allows for the mining of aggregate for public and private use.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair, in addition, I would say that the county comprehensive plan allows for a diverse use of, a diverse business mix, and this to provide for the welfare of the county.
Anything additional? Everybody agree with those?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Question four. Will the proposal cause any adverse effect on property values and future development of the land in the surrounding neighborhood?
I would say no, there's no increase in density as far as the housing of rural residential use.
Anything else? Any else, anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Will the proposed use have an effect on public utility, public services, roads, and schools?
Mr. Chair, I would say that would be a negligible impact on public utility, public service, roads, and schools as a result of the proposal using the same access road they have been using since 2010.
Anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agreed.
Question six. Will the proposed use have an impact on the environment, including its impact on groundwater, surface water, and air quality?
I'd say no, have no impact on it with the separation from the Shoreland District and the delineated wetlands.
Anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Question seven. Does the proposed use have adequate water supply subs, so pursuing treatment system, facilities, erosion control, and stormwater management pursuant to applicable standards?
I would say yes, it does. It has, the existing pit has a stormwater pollution prevention plan, and that's got, has to be updated and submitted to the county for the new expansion.
Anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agreed.
Township recommendation was to approve. Are there any other firm findings? Hearing none, action needed on this application, then is to approve, table, or deny. What would you like to do?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve an amendment of the 7/15/2010 conditional use permit to allow for an expansion of a G5 extractive use operation involving approximately 14 acres as shown on the certificate of survey dated 4/23/20. To include topsoil removal, screening equipment, crushing, washing, and processing of bituminous and demolition materials, hot mix operation, ready mixed concrete plant, and stockpiling of materials with the following conditions. All approved conditions from the 2010 approved conditional use permit also apply to this conditional use permit except that the new conditions shall to be added below for this CUP expansion if approved by the Board of Adjustments. A 25-foot buffer of no gravel extraction must occur around delineated wetlands as per the Wetland Conservation Act. No lots notice of decision from 2019. The boundary of the approved expanded extractive use area per the certificate of survey must be clearly marked on the ground prior to the start of and during extraction operations. A financial assurance surety bond in the amount of 1.25 times the estimated reclamation cost, or as approved by the Board of Adjustments, must be submitted to the county prior to the commencement of extractive use operations in the expanded CUP area as identified on the certificate of survey. Updated stormwater management plan must be implemented prior to the commencement of extractive use operations in the expanded CUP area identified in the certificate of survey. The existing stormwater pollution prevention plan must be updated and submitted to the county, Land Services Department, prior to the commencement of extractive use operations in the expanded CUP area identified in the certificate of survey.
Second? It's been moved by Sue and seconded by Rock to approve with conditions. Jake, is this covered in that number two, the buffer here? The wetlands?
No, that's the Shoreland District.
This is Shoreland District, yeah. I don't, I didn't see that or hear that in Sue's condition, that to buffer that area.
Mr. Chair and Sue, we, one of the conditions that was proposed was to clearly mark the edge of the boundaries, and that would include this portion here. But the buffering was 25 feet in the wetland, which is this dotted line.
So we don't need to buffer this, we just need to have that permanently marked?
Well, the condition that Sue wrote didn't say permanently, so I don't know if you wanted to.
I would like to see it permanently marked.
What's that?
Or continuously marked. This buff, this nut buffer, I call her a buffer by mistake.
Oh, I agree.
This area right here. Because, you know, if you mark it this year and next year, you know, we have a heavy snow or summer, whatever you put there, it's gone. I think it should be...
I think...
That makes sense.
Tell that out pretty clearly, though, because this is boundary.
It does, okay.
Must be marked on the ground prior to start and during extractive operation.
During really means as long as they're working there, it's gotta be, okay. Ron, do you understand all that better than I do?
Yes, I do. And actually, when you were out there, we didn't drive up there, but that is already staked with Mark left. But as we, you know, once we get your approval, we'll go out there, we'll put in something more permanent metal stakes or something. So it's pretty easy to see.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
Oh, that's right, we gotta do roll call. Thank you. Sue Maskey.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Rock.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well, so motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Ron. You have a good evening.
All right, thank you, Board.
Ron is out, we have the next applicant in the lobby.
Not bringing him in yet? I have a question. Can you ask and see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Whatever's on the screen, they can see. I meant to ask that last week, and I forgot to, so they can see that.
They can see when Jake moves the mic, they can see.
They can't see our pointer, so they can see his...
So why did they are in video conferencing? They're only calling in, they can't see it.
Are most of them video conferencing, or?
Tonight, most of them are tele, I don't know.
Okay, okay.
We have the new survey for this flat, right, with the wetlands delineated?
It's back printed, it's in your comment.
Which part?
It's the blue, it's underneath the blue, Rick.
Here?
Yep, underneath the blue.
I am, I think it's the time to see it. Keep going, you'll find it, it's white. Okay.
She does. But I have eyelids.
Okay, so admitting to the lobby, Paul Herkenhoff, authorized agent for Mike Anderson and Mike Anderson.
Paul Herkenhoff, Mike Anderson, Terry Stroos.
Is now joining.
Good evening, gentlemen. Hello, good evening.
Hi, Don, Paul, Terry, and Mike here.
Hey, can you each state your name and address for the record for us?
Sure. Paul Herkenhoff, 24314 Smiley Road, Nisswa, Minnesota.
Terry Stroos, 26314, or 24314 Smiley Road, Suite 7, Nisswa.
Mike Anderson, 1149 Westlake Drive, Detroit Lakes.
Hey, thank you. As I think the conference call does, it tells you that this is being recorded both video and audio. So with that, Jake, could you read the request into the record for us?
Certainly, Mr. Chair and members of the board. The next applicant, the Mend family trust, with purchaser being Mike Anderson, authorized agent Paul Herkenhoff. The address at 19365 Sota Road, Brainerd, Minnesota. This is a preliminary plat request for Lakeview condo storage plat consisting of 44 total lots. And of course, this is a recommendation to the county board, which is the next step. Lots 1 through 10 are in the Shoreland District, and a separate lot, which will be in a common interest community plat and may potentially include dwelling units. Lots 11 through 34 are proposed non-residential lots to be used for individual commercial storage units only and are all located within a commercial two-zone property, portion of the property. All right. We'll turn our attention to the survey site plan. This is directly across the road from North Lawn Lake, as you saw from the onsite. State Highway 371, of course, is right here. Sota Road, which is a frontage road butts up against it. There is a proposal for an approach here. Private road, of course. You might recall at a previous planning commission meeting, there was a proposal to rezone these properties, to split a large parcel, and then split it up after the zoning. This was changed from commercial to Shoreland District down here on this parcel. This, I don't remember if it switched from waterfront commercial to commercial two. I think that's the way it went. So it went to commercial two. Obviously, they're conforming meets all the sizes, things like that. That's sort of set up where we're at today, which is a proposal to have 34 units. I'm sorry, lots 11 through 34, excuse me, are going to be in this commercial area set up as individual commercial storage units. So instead of having your mini storage where they're on all one building, the idea is each person or each owner of the individual lots would have a storage, so non-residential. This dotted line was recently updated, it's the wetland delineation. On the other side here, we have the Shoreland District lot, meeting all setbacks. You can see the building envelope, 100 feet from Mulberry Recreation Development Lake. You've got 10 lots meeting all of our tier density requirements for residential development. Again, private road, cul-de-sac, things like that. I will let the applicant speak for this more than I would about their actual proposal here, but I believe the intended concept here is a combination garage with a potential dwelling unit for occasional seasonal use. But again, allow the applicant to speak, speak more about their specific needs on the property. Concerning any impervious coverage, you saw that there was a, an addendum to this that was submitted that shows that in the areas required, they are meeting the impervious coverage amounts maximum. In the Shoreland District, it's 25%. So in this lot, they're at 19%. The maximum allowed within 500 feet of a lake, which is what these two arcs are. In commercial, it's 30%. They're meeting that at 29.8. The maximum allowed outside the Shoreland Protection Zone is 35. So in this little chunk of an area, they're meeting that as well. So they do meet the impervious coverage issues there. Because this is in first assessment, we wouldn't have received any comments from township. Mendot did provide a comment, it was published online concerning access. Highway Department provided their comment as well, the county highway department. That was after the publication. It was emailed to everyone and printed, presumably for you. We didn't receive any comments from the DNR or Lake Associations. We did receive three comments after publication, all unsupportive in nature. That was emailed and printed as well. And with that, I mean, there could be a lot of things we can cover here, but that's a little bit of an introduction.
I have a quick question for you, Jake.
Yep.
You said lots 1 through 10 are residential in nature.
Yep.
And then 11 through 34 are storage, but what about these down here, this 1 through 10 here?
So to clarify, Paul, that's one, is that 34 units are going to be commercial storage, right?
That's correct.
And then 10 units are going to be residential?
Because I heard you say 11 through 34.
Yep, yep. So I think on the, just on the packet there, probably just a little bit...
Those are all storage?
Just to clarify, there's going to be 40... Just to clarify, there's going to be, um, forty-four lots.
Okay, total.
Okay.
Thank you, Jake. Does the applicant have any new information that has not been previously submitted?
I do, Mr. Chair, and, and let me know if you can't hear me, I'll speak a little louder.
We hear you just fine.
Thank you, um, you know, as Jake talked about, uh, the portion where the storage buildings are going is currently commercial two, and with the land use ordinance, specifically Article ten, talking about storage units being allowed within that zoning district, we could pull the permits for all those structures right now, so the focus of the request is really the postage stamp lots around the, the storage buildings, you know, uh, rather than renting them out, the owner would like to sell those units off. Um, and specifically with the property, it was all zoned waterfront commercial, except for that small portion that was, uh, previously zoned shoreline residential. So when we started the project, we looked at it and we wanted to keep the residential closer to the lake, providing more of a buffer to Mulberg Lake and the adjoining residential owners, so we wanted to keep the residential further away from the highway department to better fit within the surrounding zoning there, and in turn, pushing the commercial closer to Highway three seventy-one. Um, as Jake stated before, the wetlands have been delineated, delineated, excuse me, Mitch Brinkston did that delineation, um, you know, and with the plat we're submitting, the benefit of doing the plat is we do get a full engineered stormwater plan that's in your packet, and we also include a declaration which spells out the rules and restrictions of the plat, uh, just adding more restrictions onto it. We have that engineered plan in there and we will also be doing, there's also a SWIP plan included within that engineered packet, and there also will be a SWIP permit pulled from the, uh, MPCA and they'll be monitoring the construction out there. The nice thing with this property, there's an existing frontage road on it, so access comes, and I think Jake said here, it's gonna be a, an entrance proposed, there's already an entrance in place to the property, and the applicant's gonna be using that existing entrance to serve the property, so there won't be any new entrances going on to the frontage road. Um, and there was a concern about wells serving the residential property and the wells will be covered in the declaration, um, whether that be, it'll be a, a common well for the property, so there's no easement there, there was a question about easements for the well. That's all I had, uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Anderson would like to add a few things too, if he could.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay? Oh, I'll get off, we'll switch chairs.
Not, not as good as Paul.
Okay, I took Paul's chair, uh.
Oh, there you go, now you're better.
Yeah, we have been working out there for two or three weeks, uh, I've, uh, talked to my neighbor directly to south of me, uh, he's in favor of the project, um, wishes us good wa- good wishes, uh, there's another neighbor, a couple doors down, that wishes us good luck, uh, talking about previous, uh, people, I guess, uh, yesterday you had a few, uh, across like, a few people that weren't happy, but I've been out there for three, four weeks and I've never met any of these people, uh, would have been more than happy to discuss anything with you, um, currently, last year, we are, uh, doing something similar to this in Detroit Lakes, or just like it, I, I should say, uh, right, uh, right by, uh, Little Detroit walking distance, right on the Detroit Lake City Line, uh, DNR is walking distance from our project and, uh, the buck stops with me, I do all the dirt work, me and my son, um, we're MPCA certified to do all the BMPs, and we've been at it for a year and a half and have not had one complaint from anybody, any neighbors, any law officials or anything, we take pride in what we do, uh, we enjoy these, uh, projects, uh, a- and it's been received real well, uh, there was a, a complaint about, uh, cutting some trees out there, but unfortunately, we would have loved to, left a few more trees out there, but I guess you had a couple storms a few years back and, uh, th- there was just so much blow down, we actually had to have it logged, um, even the DNR made a comment out there getting my fire permit that, yeah, I mean, uh, it was a complete disaster coming off the lake, so unfortunately, we had to take a few more trees, but we're, uh, we're sure, certainly gonna plant some, uh, if we get approved here and get this going, and, uh, we're right against the impervious, uh, twenty-eight percent, we made these postage-sized lots at forty by sixty-four, but that will come down to fit the market, in Detroit Lakes, we have three sizes, forty by sixty-four being the biggest, but, uh, we sold one today in DL at thirty-six by forty-eight, so the, actually, the impervious, uh, will actually increase or decrease, they'll be more pervious, we just, uh, wanna get, we don't know what the market's like, or how many boats and Corvettes people, uh, have that they, they wanna store, um, so that number, that number will come down, um, otherwise, I don't think I have much to add, um, otherwise, uh, the neighbor, my son, I didn't meet him, the neighbor directly to the north of me, met my boys, didn't have any negative comments and, uh, and so far, uh, you know, uh, I think it'll be a good project for that piece of land, and, uh, I guess, and, uh, I'll, uh, if you got any questions, uh, about it, I'm, I'm right here as well.
Okay, thank you, any other information you'd like to share at this point?
You know, nothing, I need a shower, we're burning today and yesterday, I was there for thirty-six hours, so I need a nap.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, uh, Paul?
Yeah.
Rick Skogen.
Hey, Rick.
I, I need some clarification from you.
Sure.
I heard you say that regarding the storage units, you could pull the permit today but for, and, uh, explain that but for again to me?
Sure, uh, with, uh, commercial two zoning, Rick, uh, the land use ordinance allows, uh, commercial storage buildings, meaning that they could be permitted, if Mike wanted to start building one or two or three or all of them, he could pull the permits over the counter, obviously, you know, he'd have to meet setbacks and things like that and it would have to be a county review, but there is no conditional use permit required for the placement of those buildings.
But what was your but for then? I heard you say, well, maybe I misunderstood, Paul, but I heard you say that you could pull the permit now for the storage buildings but for something, but maybe I misunderstood that.
Oh, yeah, the, the, the reason for the request is for the postage stamp lots for the, for the ownership purposes. Am I still accusing you?
I, I, that's fine, I just don't understand why the postage stamp lot make a difference?
Then, that way, he, Rick, this is Sue, he can sell each one of these units individually instead of renting them.
Oh, he couldn't do it, okay, I see, I understand, no, I understand, Paul.
Without the postage stamp, he couldn't sell them.
Just took me a while, thanks.
Oh, no problem.
Hey, Paul, this is Sue.
Hey, Sue.
I, I have a question on, why are we not putting a type one septic system on this residential plat?
Because there only, only gonna be one bedrooms, one bedroom, so with that size of, uh, that amount of living quarters, we're going with holding tanks instead of a full drain field.
So each, each unit out there would have their own separate holding tank?
Just the ten residential units.
The ti- that's what I mean, the ten residential ones.
That's correct.
I don't know, I just... I don't know how that, I mean, what, let's see, is it Mike?
Yes.
Okay, what's, Mike, and your, your, what you have in Detroit Lakes, what's the average length of stay that somebody is at these units?
Uh, they're, they're not, they're, they're, we have no residential in Detroit Lakes, they are, they just come there to pick up their boat, drop it off, there's no residential in DL?
Mike just did strictly storage units in Detroit Lakes.
It's just strictly storage units in Detroit Lakes?
Correct.
Oh, this is my personal opinion, but I'd like to see a type one septic system installed on the residential lots. That's my opinion.
We can get to that in just a minute, we, we should, uh, state that, uh, we have all reviewed the public testimony that was submitted in, in email form, uh, Paul and, and company, have you reviewed all the public comments?
We have, Mr. Chair.
Do you have any response to them?
Uh, I would like to respond about the concern about putting storage units in the residential area.
Okay.
I'd like to reiterate that we went through and, and rezoned this from commercial to residential, um, decreasing or decreasing the number of units that could be on that property, so there was absolutely no hiding of any residential units, uh, within this plat, Paul, I guess that'd be my own comment.
Okay, any comments from, uh, the board on public testimony?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the only comment I have is that some of it appeared to be somewhat misinformed, so I think we've clarified it with, with the, with the people here.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Sorry, I gotta edit it.
That's okay. Rebecca, you have any comments?
Not at this time, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Right. Well, with that, we'll go to our worksheet.
Uh, site visit?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. We did an onsite on this, uh, who would like to give the report?
I, I can do that, I can. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, on four nine of two thousand and twenty, there was an onsite conducted, uh, with Rebecca Best, myself, Sue Maskey and staff. Um, here's the, here's what we noted, uh, at that time and, uh, Mr. Herkenhoff was there at the, at the onsite. No residential use is proposed on the property zoned commercial two. Residential property proposal meets all of the tier density calculations, maximum impervious surface coverage allowed for a conservation design residential, residential development is thirty percent, the proposal is for twenty-eight percent. There is no new property access proposed, there's adequate ingress and egress to the property from Sota Road, applicant is aware that comments from the Crow Wing County Highway Department and MINDOT regarding access and future improvement plans to Sota Road and Highway three seventy-one. Private roads are proposed within the, uh, development, applicant is aware that proposal will need to meet commercial standards regarding lighting, screening, parking, et cetera, within the commercially zoned proposal. There appears to be adequate areas for structures and/or potential septic systems on this parcel, it is a vacant lot. The proposed lot sizes exceed the minimum size requirements for both C two and shoreline district standards, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sue, you have anything you wanna add to that?
Nope.
Any questions at all for the applicant?
Not right now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, let's go to our worksheet then. This is to list our findings of facts supporting or denying a preliminary plat. Question number one, does a proposal, does a proposed plat conform to the county's comprehensive plan?
Uh, Mr. Chair would say, yes, it does, um, page forty-two of the comprehensive plan states to encourage residential development that provides housing options for different socioeconomic groups, and also page twenty-nine also states encourage the location of additional commercial development to existing cities and discrete nodes along growth corridors on trunk highways.
Anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Question number two, is the proposal consistent with the, with the existing county subdivision ordinance?
Um, Mr. Chair would say, yes, it does, the preliminary plat meets requirements of Article nine point EF, um, of the county ordinance.
Okay, anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Agreed.
Question number three, are there any, are, are there any other standards, rules or requirements that this plat must meet?
Mr. Chair, I would say there are, there are some potential conditions that we have recommended for this plat, uh, that we would, uh, I could read through now, but I think I'll defer until we get to the, uh, actual voting.
Thank you, anything else? Everybody agree?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Question number four, is proposed plat compatible with the present land uses in the area of the proposal?
Mr. Chair, I would say it, it is, the, the present land uses of this is, uh, commercial two development and, uh, residential development, and they meet all those requirements for those sizes.
Anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agreed.
Question five, does the plat conform to all applicable performance standards in Article four point five of the subdivision ordinance?
I would say, yes, it does, uh, the preliminary plat, uh, shows all standards being met for Article nine of the subdivision ordinance.
Okay, anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Agreed.
Question number six, how are the potential environmental impacts being resolved? Stormwater, erosion controls, wetlands, floodplain, shoreline and septic systems?
Mr. Chair, I would say they meet those standards, uh, the, uh, the developer and the developer's representative have developed a plan to, to accommodate stormwater, erosion control, wetlands, floodplain, shoreline, including septic systems, uh, which are allowed, uh, for the size of the development they're building.
Okay, anything additional?
I would say the wetlands have been delineated, uh, the floodplain, the property is located outside of floodplain. Septic system, they're proposing holding tanks, which is allowed by ordinance for seasonal use, however, I'd like, I would like to see a type one septic, but it's not required, I don't.
Anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Agreed.
Question seven, have the potential public health, safety and traffic, uh, generation impacts been addressed?
Mr. Chair, I'd say they have, MINDOT has, uh, has opined on this, uh, project and, uh, there is no, uh, additional, uh, need for access off Highway three seventy-one because access will be directly off of Sota Road, which is a, a, a small county road.
Anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Agreed.
Rebecca?
Agreed.
Thank you. Question eight, any other issues pertinent to this matter? Actually needed on this application then is that this is a recommendation to the county board, we can either recommend or deny, or table.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a recommendation to, uh, to recommend to the county board the preliminary plat for Lakeview condo storage plat consisting of forty-four total lots, uh, with lots one through ten in the Shoreland District will be a common interest community plat and may potentially include dwelling units, lots eleven, I think that's eleven through thirty-four, should be one through thirty-four, lots one through thirty-four, uh, on C two are proposed as non-residential lots to be used for individual commercial storage units only and are all located within the commercially two zone portion of the property with the conditions as follows, no development on the plat in both land use districts can exceed the respective impervious coverage maximums as specified in the land use ordinance. Number two, any requirement, requirements of local county or state road authorities that control access to the property must be adhered to as a condition of approval of this plat. Number three, the final plat must be approved by the county board within one year of approval of the preliminary plat, the final plat must include a developer's agreement with the financial assurance bond to be one point two five times the estimated cost of constructing required improvements to the property, including implementing and constructing the stormwater management plan, Articles nine point eight and nine point nine. Number four, a permit from the state of Minnesota Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan must be obtained by the developer if there will be a disturbance of more than one acre of land, the permit must be on file with the county land services department prior to the start of development of the approved plat. Number five, the approved stormwater management plan must be implemented prior to start of development of the approved plat, and number six, all commercial requirements as per Article sixteen of the land use ordinance, including screening to adjacent residential uses, must be implemented prior to the land use permit approvals for the commercial storage units of that plat.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair, this is Rebecca.
Okay, so we have a motion by. So we have a motion by Rick and seconded by Rebecca to recommend approval to the county board with those conditions. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, or Sue, did you want to see the location of whatever septic is going on that property, at least on the preliminary plat? I'm not suggesting. I'm just raising the question. Do you want at least to see where they're located?
Well, I mean, each individual lot on one through 10, the holding tanks are going to be inside that proposed rectangular box. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So there'll be no holding tanks out in the common area?
That's correct.
No, I mean, they'll have to show that at the time to get a building permit.
Any other discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
Oh, geez. We have to do a roll call vote, so Sue Masek?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Aye. Yes.
Yeah.
And I will vote yes as well. So motion carries. Congratulations. Board, County Board meets May 12th. I would recommend being there.
Very good. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
You too. Paul Herkenoff, Mike Anderson, Terry Stroos.
Is now exiting.
And the new one's not on yet.
They're not on, but they're in the lobby whenever you're ready. Mr. Chair, I'll admit Kendrick Eskelson to meeting.
Are they told as being recorded?
Yeah, they have.
Okay.
And just to clarify with Mr. Eskelson, I see your phone number is waiting in the lobby. Do you want to be admitted via video and phone?
Say that again, please.
I see your phone number is waiting in the lobby. Should I admit that one too, or I think we're gonna...
No, I'm gonna hang up now. I just wasn't quite sure which pieces of technology was gonna work.
Thank you.
Well, welcome to our meeting this evening. Can you please state your names and addresses for the record?
Kendrick and Ann Eskelson, 5109 Nakomis Avenue South, Minneapolis, Minnesota, 55417.
Thank you very much. Jake, could you read the request into the record for us? Certainly, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Next applicant is for Ann Eskelson and Deborah...Boy, Kreider? Did I get that right?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Got that one right. It's for the property located 11401 Mills Road, Brainerd, Minnesota. This is a request for an ordinary high watermark setback of 50 feet to a proposed new dwelling where 100 feet is required. This is to construct a 1,800 square foot two-story dwelling per the certificate of survey received on March 18th, 2020. Going to move to the certificate of survey now. So here's the subject property on Kenny Lake...or is it Keeny?
Kenny.
Okay. It was my first instinct there. And this is a recreation development lake. And the proposal, here we have an existing house or dwelling. This is a scrape and rebuild, from my understanding, and they will be moving back the proposed house inside this envelope here. A proposed 1,800 square foot, 20-foot height house. The building envelope on the property is back here. There's a 100-foot mark. You can see the dotted line of the building envelope. And so everything is inside that 100-foot mark. They do have an existing septic system. There's the drain field or mound, and there's the tank. The proposal puts this backside of the house at about 18 feet from the tank. The topography is relatively flat slopes, sort of northeasterly, southwesterly, gently. Some other information about this particular proposal, we didn't get any comments from Garrison Township. No comments from the DNR or any Lake Association. We did receive a public comment after the publication from the adjoining neighbors on each side of the request. The request was a removal of a shed that sits on the property line, and I would assume it's this garage here with a zero-foot setback. Well, actually, a possible less than one-foot encroachment issue there. So there was some comments about that. Existing impervious is 13.4, proposed is 20.1%. And with that, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Thank you. Does the applicant have any new information that has not been previously submitted?
I'm sorry, is that a question for me?
Yes. Do you have any new information that has not been previously submitted?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Public comment, everybody had a chance to read the public comment?
Yes.
Okay. Does the applicant have any...Do you wish to respond to the public comments?
Yeah, we've been neighbors for 50 years, and we've been in conversation regarding the shed, and we've come to an agreement that the shed encroachment will be corrected. And we've got that into the works currently.
Okay. We attempted to do an onsite on this property, and we're not able to. And as a result, you know, every application we do our due diligence, and doing a physical onsite where we can physically see the property is extremely important to us. And I think the board is of the opinion that we should table this until next month so that we can have an opportunity to actually put our feet on the ground and see the property. Is that an agreement with the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would concur.
Somebody want to make that motion?
I will make a motion that we table this application pending an onsite visit in the month of May.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved by...
I should...Mr. Chair, I should point out that I moved to table the motion for Ann and Kendrick Eskelson for an OHW setback of 50...yeah, I'm gonna delineate that a little bit more clearly. Table the request for an OHW setback of 50 feet to the proposed new dwelling where 100 feet is required, and to construct a 1,800 square foot two-story dwelling per certificate of survey received through 18, 2020.
Okay. And Rebecca, you still want to second that?
Certainly, yes, second.
So it's been moved by Rick and seconded by Rebecca that we table this application. Does the applicant understand what tabling means?
I understand you're going to...We're going to start the process all over again as far as the site visit and another meeting like this one postponed.
Yes.
I get another month.
So we're going to do our onsite on May 7th. Can you make sure that the gate is unlocked for that day?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes, I will. Is it going to be another caravan of visitors?
Probably. With our sheltering in place, that's what we have to do.
No, I understand. Just to make you aware that this is an approved property, there's almost a full-time resident at the end of the driveway with plenty of room to turn around and come back. Plenty of room to turn around and come back, so don't let that hamper your access.
Okay. I'm sorry?
May 21st.
Oh, so we'll do the onsite on the 7th of May, and our next meeting will be May 21st. There'll be no additional charge for them because we're tabling it.
And Mr. Eskelson, just so you know, we're going to be sending you an email extending our timeline to make a decision, just part of state statute to make sure that we're okay legally on all this stuff. So you'll see that coming your way.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much, and we'll either see you on the 7th or we'll talk to you on the 21st. We have to vote on that. I'm sorry. All in favor of the motion? That was hard to break. We have to do a roll call vote, which we don't normally do. So Sue?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So thank you, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Mr. Eskelson is out of the meeting. The next applicant is waiting in the lobby.
Okay. We'll wait. You know, I always tell the public to turn the cell phones off. I never bother the board because they go...
Well, I know better. Only because the phone rang through there.
Okay, I'll admit it. I'll admit Malia Holbrook, applicant to the lobby or to the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, she should be in.
Good evening. Ms. Holbrook, are you there?
I think she has that message up there that says we're recording. She should be in. She'll be there.
Hello?
You might be on mute.
Are you on mute?
I'm here, but you guys are pretty quiet. I'm gonna try to get to a quieter area.
Okay. Can you, for the record, please state your name and address for us?
Malia Holbrook, 8856 Moganson Shores Road, Brainerd, Minnesota.
Thank you very much. Jake, would you read the request into the record for us?
Certainly, Mr. Chair and members of the board. The next applicant is Kyle and Malia Holbrook, address at 8856 Moganson Shores Road, Brainerd, Minnesota. There are two variance requests for this one. An ordinary high watermark setback of 49 feet to a proposed new deck where 75 feet is required, and a side yard setback of 6 feet to a proposed new deck where 10 feet is required. This is to construct a 416 square foot lakeside deck, per the certificate of survey received on April 10th, 2020. All right, I'm gonna pull up the certificate of survey. Zoom out a bit. Here we are. So we have South Long Lake, of course, here, which is a GD lake, 75-foot setback. Building envelope is shown on the dotted line here, existing dwelling. The proposal is for a new deck in this gray shaded area, 6 feet from the property line, 49 feet from OHW. As a side note, currently, the house is 5 feet from the property line. And 16 plus 49 from the lake. So then, another fact here is this is close to a bluff, but it is not. Note, surveyor note number six, a bluff analysis was completed on the ground using high-accuracy land surveying equipment, and it's been determined that a bluff does not exist. The steep slope is a half-foot short of the vertical elevation to meet the minimum bluff height, which of course is 25 feet. So we did look at that intently. As far as the impervious, it's existing at 21.7%. It will go down to 20.9%. I think it's because they're removing approximately 66 square feet of some sort of concrete to an entryway, stairs, walkway. So that's how we got our reduction. In terms of comments we received, we received no comments from Long Lake Township, the DNR, or the Lake Association. No comments at all received. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Does the applicant have any new information that has not been previously submitted? Are the Holbrooks there? Hello? Are they still on the call?
They're still on the call.
Nope. I think we had everything to you guys.
Okay. And there was no public testimony, so we don't need to cover that. We did an onsite on this property. Can you hear us okay? I think she's got a bad connection on her end. I think maybe. Can the Holbrooks hear us okay?
An alternative would be for her to hang up and call the conference phone number, if you'd like to do that, Malia.
Did you hear that?
I'll try.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't understand a thing. It's just...
Oh, I can't either.
Just popping in and...
I can't. I can barely understand you guys. Hold on. I'll call the number.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
We'll wait for your call.
Okay. Okay.
Admitting Malia to the lobby, it'll take one thirty, couple seconds.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, you're back. Can you hear us better now?
Is now joining. I cannot hear you guys.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oops, sorry, I couldn't hear you guys very well either on my end through that app.
Okay. You can hear us now?
I can hear you now, yep.
Much, much better. Okay, we're just gonna go and talk about the onsite that was completed.
I can do that.
Or Rebecca, with.
I can do the onsite.
Okay, go ahead.
This is Sumaski, we did an onsite on April ninth, twenty twenty, with Rebecca Best, Rick Scogan, myself and staff. There, as noted, there are some similar structures in the area, but most are not as close to the lake as this proposal. There are a few similar structures in the area, but again, most not quite as close to the lake as this proposal. Board members present question whether this was a bluff. After the onsite, visit staff verified with the surveyor that this slope fell short of meeting the minimum bluff height by six inches. Extremely steep slope is evident. A normal buffer will be required as part of an approved stormwater management plan with impervious coverage at twenty point nine percent per survey. There is good stormwater retention area at the bottom of the steep slope, just in front of the lake. The deck could be shortened to meet the ten-foot side yard setback requirement. Practical difficulty, it's difficult to determine a smaller deck could be built without a variance as request for the fifteen percent rule in the ordinance. That is all, Mr. Chair.
Anything else, Rebecca or Rick, that you'd like to add?
Not here.
No, no, Mr. Chair.
Okay, alrighty. Any questions for the applicant?
Ah, I don't, I don't have any questions. You guys have all been helpful the whole way.
Anything you wanna?
Okay.
Okay, so then we'll go to our worksheet. Uh, for the applicant's knowledge, we have a worksheet that we have to complete, stating what our findings of fact on every application are, and if we answer any of the questions no, it means we must deny the request, okay?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I do have a question for, let's be honest.
Okay.
Um, because from the survey, you can't really tell what is over on, if it be the northeast side, as far as where the house is, and is that house a distance away?
Did the applicant hear the question?
Yep.
Or does?
I can't, I can't hear it very well.
He's wondering what is to the, what direction does that be?
That'd be northeast.
He's wondering about the property northeast of yours, uh, is there a house on that property, and if so, where is it at?
The property northeast of mine, um, no, maybe like across northeast.
If you're looking at, if you're looking at the lake, Malia, it would be the property to your left.
Okay, yep, that's John's property.
Okay. Did I answer your question?
Yep.
I was just curious as to. The encroachment.
He said, I think seventy-five feet offshore there, he's got a bigger house there with the deck.
Got it.
Okay, so then we're gonna go ahead and go through our worksheet.
Thanks.
Uh, this is for the, the Board here to answer these questions. Question number one, is the variance in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance?
Mr. Chair, I would say yes for the setbacks in the ordinary high watermark, as this lot is an existing lot of record in the plat of Moganson Shores, which was established in nineteen thirty. The county ordinance allows property owners to develop and approve the property. I would say no to the side yard setback of six feet, as the deck can be, uh, made four feet smaller to meet the ten-foot side yard setback.
So you're answering that both yes and no?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything additional from anybody?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just clarification on that, this is Rick speaking. Um, I, I understand Sue's answer to the question, I'm, I'm not certain how we vote on that.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So Sue, your, your yes answer was?
To the ordinary high water setback for the deck. No is for the side yard setback.
Right, so for the OHW, Sue's answer is yes, does everybody agree with that?
Agree.
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 Okay. For the side yard setback, uh, her answer to that question is no, does everybody agree with that?
I agree. Agree.
Agree.
Okay. For the side yard setback, uh, her answer to that question is no, does everybody agree with that?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. Question number.
Can I ask a question about that?
Okay.
Is that, are you talking about like on the side? Cause there's already concrete steps there. Is that what you're talking about, the four feet?
No, the other side.
We're talking about the other side where there's, where there's, where you're asking for a six-foot setback from the side yard, from your property line.
Oh, cause our house is like butted up right to their property.
Right, right.
Okay, okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yep, you bet. Question number two, is the variance consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Mr. Chair, I'd say it is, we, the comprehensive plan serves to protect, preserve, and improve the quality of Corwin County's lakes by minimizing the effects of stormwater runoff with a stormwater management plan.
Anything additional?
I would say yes, Mr.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead Rebecca.
Well, I was just gonna say yes, Mr. Chair, uh, the plan does encourage residential development that provides housing options for different socioeconomic groups.
Okay. Anything, anybody else has? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Agree.
Question three, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the land use ordinance?
I would say yes, it does, um, there are similar structures and land uses in the neighborhood, as noted during the Board of Adjustment onsite on, what day was that, four nine of twenty twenty?
No, it's four twenty-three.
Okay, also, it's, you know, it's an existing lot of record, uh, it's an existing non-conforming structure located on a lot of record in the plat of Moganson Shores established in nineteen thirty. No to the side yard, as the deck can be constructed to meet the ten-foot side yard setback.
I'm gonna ask that everybody vote on a combination of that, uh, that you agree with the yes answer and the no answer. Okay, does everybody agree with that?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. Question number four, is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the property owner?
Mr. Chair, I would say, uh, yes, it is, there's a, a existing non-conforming lot prior to zoning regulations in nineteen seventy.
Okay, anything additional?
I would say no to the side yard, the six foot, uh, required, the request of six-foot setback is created by the property owner's desire to construct a sixteen by twenty-four deck when they could meet the side yard setback.
I can concur with that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Does everybody agree with those comments?
Agreed.
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 Question number five, will the issuance of a variance maintain the essential character of the locality?
Yes, it does, there are similar structures and land use patterns, uh, in the vicinity, as noted during the Board of Adjustment onsite on four nine twenty, and the aerial photo and staff report, and no to the side yard setback, as the deck could be constructed to meet the ten-foot side yard setback.
Anything additional? Everybody agree to Sue's comments?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Question number six, does the need for a variance involve more than economic consideration?
I would say yes, the implementation of a stormwater management plan will help protect the water quality of lower South Long Lakes.
Any other comments? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Question seven, was the township recommendation, there was none?
None.
None. Any other pertinent findings? Actually, need on this application then is to approve table or deny?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve an OHW setback of forty-nine feet to proposed new deck where seventy-five feet is required, and deny a side yard setback of six feet to proposed new deck where ten feet is required, to construct a four hundred and sixteen, it'd be less, you know, square foot, to construct a lakeside deck per certificate of survey received for ten twenty twenty. I'm not gonna put the four hundred and sixteen square feet in there, cause that will now be smaller.
Stormwater.
And with the conditions, a stormwater management plan to include a shoreline rapid assessment model for a normal buffer submitted by the applicant and approved by county staff.
It's been moved by Sue and, and seconded by Rock to approve the OHW, but to deny the side yard setback for the deck, does the applicant understand what we're doing?
Um, yeah, you're, I've gotta go a couple more feet in to start the deck.
Basically, that deck has to be ten feet from the side yard boundary line.
Right, it's only six feet right now, so we gotta go one more feet in.
Right, you gotta move it approximately four feet, correct. Do you understand about the, uh, about the buffer?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Sue?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Rock? Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so. Motion carries, congratulations, thank you for your time, and thanks for calling back in, it was much easier to hear you.
Yeah, thank you guys, take care, have a good night.
Yep, good night.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is now exiting. Admitting to lobby, uh, Mr. Tim Scholke authorized the engine for Susan Breyer Night Off family.
Tim Scholke with Elite Construction.
Is now joining.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you.
Can you please, uh, state your name and address for the record for us?
Tim Scholke, Elite Construction Services, Inc., one two seven two three Northern Oak Drive, Baxter, Minnesota, five six four two five.
Thank you very much. Jake, can you read the request into the record for us?
Certainly, Mr. Chair and members of the Board, the next applicant is the Night Off Family Cabin, Susan Breyer, address is one five zero five six Hunt Road, it's Deerwood, Minnesota, five six four four four. There are two variance requests for this application, one is an ordinary high water setback of seventy-two feet to a proposed new septic holding tank where one hundred feet is required, an OHW setback of seventy-five feet to a proposed new enclosed porch addition where one hundred feet is required, this is to construct a twelve by twenty-four enclosed porch, further certificate of survey received on April second, and to install a new fifteen hundred gallon septic holding tank per that same survey. All right, so we're gonna move to the survey, talk about that a little bit, Bay Lake is on the northeast side here, it's an RD lake, so there's a hundred foot setback, you have a building envelope as shown here, dotted line, existing dwelling over here, the proposal to put on that enclosed porch is off here, twelve by twenty-four, you can see it's seventy-five feet from the lake, it's nearest point, so that's what that is. The, uh, there is an existing boathouse that's going to be removed and rebuilt farther away, eliminating any floodplain issues, rebuilt to the same size, so no variance for the boathouse, no change in use, but when they add a holding tank and it's not meeting the setback here, that's gonna require a variance as well. The impervious is at six point six, that'll move to seven point three, it is a rather large lot, I don't remember the exact acreage on that lot, you remember, it's big, it's big, that's why.
The lots can split though.
Yeah, big is split.
Oh, okay, good.
Lots can split right, right there.
Two point four.
Two point four acres, okay, thank you. Um, as far as any comments we've received, Bay Lake Township recommends approval, that was in your packet, no comments from the DNR or the Lake Association, no other public comments received, that's all from me.
You wanna address the garage?
Uh, yes, uh, not part of the request, uh, as far as a, a variance, but the garage, uh, they're proposing a garage with the guest quarters of six hundred fifty-two square feet, that's under seven hundred square feet, so no issues there, anything else, Mr. Chair, on that?
I just wanted that on the record, that was only six fifty-two.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Does the applicant have any new information that has not been previously submitted that they'd like to talk about at this time?
Uh, only comment I can say is I, I was onsite today with Martin Joyce, we have a winter, uh, agreement for the septic design, uh, that was required, and we did our borings today, uh, septic design will be submitted to the county very shortly, and we had, we encountered great soil conditions, so no concerns at all from my end of what we had proposed, what's shown on the survey.
Okay, thank you. And there was no public comment on this?
No.
So we don't need to cover that. Uh, we did do an onsite.
Have Rebecca do it.
Rebecca, would you like to do the onsite for this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. On April ninth, two thousand twenty, we did our onsite, uh, with Don Hales, myself, Rick Scogan, Sue, and, uh, Sumaski and staff, and we noted a number of things during our onsite visit. Uh, first of all, that it's a very well vegetated property, uh, the proposed boathouse will be moved back farther away from the lake, uh, we did have discussion and looking at considering conditioning a stormwater management plan that includes gutters on the boathouse at a minimum, which would direct the water away from the lake. Um, the proposed enclosed porch is located on the east side of the dwelling, and the propose, uh, the proposal involves no further encroachment to the lake, and we also did note that there are similar structures with, and similar setbacks in the area.
The only thing I would change in what you just said was the screen porch is actually on the northwest side of the house. I think you, I think you stated it was on the east side. Am I correct on that?
Yes, yes, that is what I stated, I stated it was on the east.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments for?
No.
Not here.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none, we will go to our worksheet, we have a worksheet that we use to help summarize our findings of fact, uh, any, no answers to any of the questions, uh, under state statute means that we have to deny the request. Okay, question number one, is the variance in harmony with the purposes and intent of the ordinance?
Mr. Chair, I'd say it is, it is, it is an existing lot of record, established prior to the zoning regulations of nineteen seventy.
Okay, anything additional?
Oh, I'd add that the county ordinance allows property owners to develop and improve their property.
Okay.
I would also like to add that this is an existing non-conforming dwelling, which is located sixty feet from Bay Lake.
Okay. Rebecca, you have any other comments?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Does everybody agree?
Agree.
Agreed.
Question number two, is the variance consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Rebecca.
I would say, I would say yes, the plan does encourage residential development that provides housing options for different socioeconomic groups.
Thank you. Am I correct on that?
Yes, yes, that is what I stated, I stated it was on the east.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments for?
No.
None here.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none, we will go to our worksheet, we have a worksheet that we use to help summarize our findings of fact, any, no answers to any of the questions under state statute means that we have to deny the request. Okay, question number one, is the variance in harmony with the purposes and intent of the ordinance?
Mr. Chair, I'd say it is, it is an existing lot of record established prior to the zoning regulations of nineteen seventy.
Okay, anything additional?
Oh, I'd add that the county ordinance allows property owners to develop and improve their property.
Okay.
I would also like to add that this is an existing non-conforming dwelling which is located sixty feet from Bay Lake.
Rebecca, you have any other comments?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Does everybody agree?
Agree.
Question number two, is the variance consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Rebecca.
I would say, I would say yes, the plan does encourage residential development that provides housing options for different socioeconomic groups.
Thank you. Anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Question number three, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the land use ordinance?
Mr. Chair would say yes, it does, um, there are similar structures and land uses in the neighborhood with similar setbacks, as noted during the Board of Adjustment onsite on four nine of two thousand and twenty. Also, the proposed addition is to the side of the existing dwelling with no further encroachment on Bay Lake.
Thank you. Anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Question number four, is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the property owner?
I would say yes, it is, it's an existing legal non-conforming structure located in the lot, on a lot of record in the plat of, autodidoc plat of government lots three, four, and five, which was established in nineteen sixty-six.
Okay, thank you. Anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Agree.
Question number five, will the issuance of a variance maintain the essential character of the locality?
Mr. Chair, I'd say it does, there are similar structures and land use patterns and uses of the property in the vicinity of the request, as noted during the Board of Adjustment onsite on four nine of two thousand and twenty.
Thank you. Anything additional?
I'd also like to add is the two hundred and eighty-eight square foot addition is a minimal addition to the side of an existing non-conforming structure.
Okay, anything else? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Question six, does the need for a variance involve more than economic considerations?
I would say yes, the addition is a minimal expansion to an existing legal non-conforming structure for personal use.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I'd also add that there's a minimal increase in the impervious coverage going from six point six to seven point three percent.
Thank you. Everybody agree with those?
Agree.
Question seven, township recommendation was to approve, any other pertinent findings? Hearing none, action needed on this application then is to approve table or deny?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make motion to approve the request for the Night Off Family Cabin variance for an OHW setback of seventy-two feet to a proposed new septic holding tank where one hundred feet is required. Number two, OHW or ordinary high water setback of seventy-five feet to propose new enclosed porch addition where one hundred feet is required to construct a twelve-by-twenty-four enclosed porch per certificate of survey received for two of two thousand and twenty, and to install a new fifteen-hundred gallon septic holding tank per certificate of survey received for two, two, for two of two thousand and twenty, with the conditions that a stormwater management plan submitted by applicant be approved by the county staff.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Rick and seconded by Rebecca, does the applicant understand the condition of a stormwater management plan?
That's one, one question clarification, because we are under, we will be under fifteen percent on our impervious, I do intend on putting gutters onto the boathouse structure, which on that particular parcel, we are going to be probably in the one percentile.
Yes, you will.
Fifteen percent, right, so there's really no concern there, but are you asking that I have to get, hire somebody for the stormwater management plan, or is this something I can show through my own site plan of where our holding retention ponds will be, our depressions will be, and we are managing the water away from the structure?
I'm going to let staff answer that question for you.
All right, so this is Jake Free with county staff, so what the potential condition here is that, I know you said you're going to gutter it, but what this says is that'll be just part of the bigger stormwater plan for the property. Now, if the condition wants to be changed to just the boathouse, then we need to change the condition, but the condition as proposed is stormwater management for all impervious on the property, and that means your gutters and whatever gets rolled into a plan, you can develop it, we assist you through that process.
I would recommend that we do just the boathouse.
I can concur, I'll make, I'll amend my motion that rather than a stormwater management plan for the entire two point four acres or whatever it is, to not include the entire property, but to include the boathouse, so the boathouse be guttered with all stormwater from that boathouse be directed away from the lake.
Is that okay with you, Rebecca?
Yes, I agree.
Does the applicant understand that now?
Yeah, I appreciate that entirely because my intent was based on natural contours to gutter away from the lake, and we have some natural holding areas for retention to work within our landscape, so that's in total what I was expecting.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, all, or Sue, I mean, if you're in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Sue?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Rock?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so congratulations, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, and have a good, have a good evening.
No, appreciate it, thank you guys.
Tim Scholke with Elite Construction.
All right, Mr. Chair, admitting Mike Munster Tiger authorized agent for Robbie Priville to the lobby, I believe Mr. Priville was joining as well, but.
At this point, just Mike?
Yes.
Sure.
Good evening, Mike, are you there?
Yeah, I am, can you hear me?
I can now, yes, thank you, good evening and welcome to the Board of Adjustment. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name's Mike Munster Tiger, work for Backyard Reflections, our address is two-four-one-four-two Smiley Road, Minnesota, Minnesota.
Thank you, are the Privilles joining us?
They are not.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. With that, Jake, would you please read the request into the record for us?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, next applicant is Robbie and Kelly Priville, address is one-one-three-nine-one Hillcrest Heights, Cross Lake, Minnesota, five-six-four-four-two. There are three variance requests to allow two hundred and six square foot combined patio water oriented structure, or water oriented accessory structure where a hundred and twenty square feet is allowed, to allow a portion of that to be in a bluff, and to allow dirt moving within a bluff. And this is to construct a four-foot wide walkway access ramp to the lake. Let's see, per the certificate of survey received on April fourteenth, a one hundred and eighteen square foot patio addition, and an eighty-five square foot, I'm sorry, a hundred and eighteen square foot patio addition to the existing water oriented accessory structure consisting of eighty-five square foot outside the bluff and thirty-three square feet in the bluff, removal, reclamation, and re- revegetation of existing stairs and walkway, dirt moving amounts of twenty-eight cubic yards in SIZ one, ten in SIZ two, dirt moving of one cubic yard in the bluff, vegetation clearing consisting of one sixteen inch jackpine and one four inch jackpine, replacement of existing wood retaining walls with the installation of boulder retaining wall in SIZ one. All right, moving to survey, it's a rather lengthy property, the subject, all right, this is the subject property, but on Whitefish Lake, a GD lake, there is a, I think I'm going to scoot to the exhibit, so we're going to blow this up a little bit here. So there is a bluff that was identified in the property, the top of the bluff is here, but it ends here, so it only includes a slight portion of the activity in the bluff, otherwise this is just a steep slope. There is an existing four-foot stairway or walkway leading down, legal, existing, non-conforming, actually, it's legal existing, but anyway, the proposal is to construct this walkway here, which would be more ramp style, and remove this, there is no variance request for having two walkways and revegetate, there's an existing wooden deck down by the water shown here, that'll be removed, then the proposal is to make this walkway four feet down here, close to the water, and then bulge out a new expanded patio area attached or contiguous with the water oriented accessory structure, so combined it would go over a hundred and twenty square feet. The impervious on the property is at twenty-two point two percent, it is going to be proposed to be twenty-two point six percent. I will note, I apologize, note that the walkway and the patio proposal are proposed to be engineered pervious construction and not your typical sort of over the counter normal stuff. As far as comments received, no comments from Ideal Township, the DNR, or SWCD, we did receive a comment from the Whitefish Area Property Owners Association today, that was emailed and it's included in your packet, we did receive three public comments as well, all after the publication and it was emailed and printed, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for staff, are four-foot walkways allowed on water accessory structures as they are in houses?
We allow, yeah, we allow four-foot walkway. That's my question.
Okay, does the applicant have any new information that they would like to talk about?
Uh, as far as new, not necessarily, um, we have, we have, I have contacted the main guy that, that, um, it's kind of, there's three neighbors that got together and looked at it, and I contacted Ron who kind of started the comments, and then, um, Robbie actually contacted Chuck or Charlie, um, we've both talked to him, um, I, I went through to Ron, explained to what we were doing, um, he just felt like there was lack of information coming out, and so I offered after the meeting, whatever happens, to what we do, I would meet him out there and go through with as many as the neighbors as, as could join us to go through what the construction of, of the landscaping was. Rob, Rob talked to Charlie, which Charlie is a southernmost neighbor, and he's just concerned because there's a lot of runoff that comes down between the property line and our proposed sidewalk start, and he doesn't want that pushed to his property.
Okay, thank you.
So that's, that's the only thing I got.
Okay, and there was no public comment on this?
There was.
Oh, there was?
Yeah, we have three, three comments.
That's right.
Um, and, and we'll poll, okay, well, any, any questions from the board, everybody had a chance to read those, do you have any comments from them?
Mike, this is Sue Meskey, I guess one question I have is, how are you proposing to stop the runoff from going onto the property to the south?
So.
We have no plans on how that's going to be handled.
So, we are not actually changing any of the grade above the bluff line or the hill line, so the water is going to continually run the same way it always has been, we're just, we're going from the hill line and starting the sidewalk, you know, with, if they're concerned that it's going to follow the sidewalk down with, with it being a permeable system and with planting natural grasses on the side, I'm not worried on our part to keep this from, from eroding, and this, and up between the sidewalk and the property line, it's going to run like it always has been, we won't push it anymore to the neighbor per se, it's just going to follow the natural contours. So everything from, from the peak of this hill flows back towards their cabins, it doesn't flow over the hill and down, down, and then it flows to the south also, so that's where the, the major runoff is, it follows, follows that peak to the south and right about where that ten, ten on the ten-foot mark where the property line is, is where it runs down the hill.
Okay. Mike, Rick Skogan, how are you?
Good, how you doing, Rick?
Good. Say, Mike, when we talked, we had two decks that were still there back in the, on the onsite, but our two walkways, now we have one. Maybe I misunderstood, Mike, but I thought one of the reasons for the additional eighty-five feet of deck surface next to the water accessory structure was to accommodate a wheelchair turnaround, but now that I'm looking at your plans, the existing water oriented structure doesn't have a door on that side.
No, it's, what, yeah, it is, it's a, it's a turn, the, so the paver patio is for the guy with the wheelchair to be able to get off the walkway so people can still use the walkway, but still, he can still be down there on, on a solid surface so he doesn't get stuck getting off the pavers. The door is on, on the lakeside, so he can, if he, if he wanted to, he could enter, with our sidewalk coming up there, he can enter the, the water oriented structure on the lakeside, but this, this patio here is for him to be able to get off the walkway.
Mike, this is Sue again, why eighty-five square feet? I mean, to me, that sounds, that, that's an excessive amount of, I mean, that's a large area for somebody to get off a path in a wheelchair, if, I mean, eighty-five square feet, why can't that be made smaller?
I mean, we could, um, what, what we did was, this is how the design came out, this is, this is where the, some of the, the rock wall kind of naturally forms on the hillside, we brought it back to the back corner of the, the, um, water oriented structure, and this is where it naturally made the paver area, um, so that's why it's at eighty-five square feet.
Do you have any other comments that you, that, I'm talking, I'm addressing Mike right now, do you have any other responses to any of the public comment?
I mean, there's, there's numerous questions, like I talked to Ron for over hour and fifteen minutes last night, um, there's numerous questions, I would have to go through every single one and make a comment per question, if, if you want to do that, I can, um.
That's up, that's up to you, you don't, you definitely don't need to if you don't want to.
The, the main thing I get here is, is, from what I understand, this sidewalk down to the water oriented structure, and what we would do here is not, not the, it wouldn't need a variance, the only thing that needs the variance is pretty much this, this patio right here, the eighty-five square foot patio, um, so, you know, I, I guess where I'm coming from is, is, um, I would love to sit down with these guys and explain to what we're doing here, because I think, I think if they better understood what we're doing, they wouldn't have as many questions, um, but, you know, what we're asking for is the eighty-five square feet, and if I get less, I get less, I'm just, I'm just trying to give them what we propose to them.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask staff, how big is that existing shed down there? I'm looking at the.
Looks like it's eight by eleven. I wonder if it's on, is it eight by eleven, there it is, eight, eleven, there you go.
Eight by eleven.
Ninety-nine square feet, or a hundred and twenty is allowed. Yeah, ninety-nine square feet, or a hundred and twenty is allowed. Uh, but also.
Eighty-eight to a hundred and twenty.
What is, what is the ADA requirement for, I'm curious.
They could add thirty-two square foot down there and meet the hundred and twenty square foot water-oriented accessory structure. And I'm.
So, so on ramps that go downstairs, four-foot walkways, we allow thirty-two square foot landings to make the turn?
Great.
Why don't we do the onsite report at this point?
I'll do it. Uh, Mike, this is Rick again. On four-twenty, we did an, we did an onsite. Uh, here's what we noted. The existing stairway is located in the bluff, and we noted that the new proposed walkway would be outside of the bluff zone. Uh, if the existing stairway was removed and bluff revegetated, now that's been changed apparently, but at that point, if the existing stairway was removed and the bluff revegetated, no variance would be required for the new proposed walkway. Then if, if the proposed patio in SIZ one, an existing shed did not exceed a hundred and twenty square feet, the variance for an oversized patio water-oriented accessory structure wouldn't be required. Um, the stormwater management plan would include a normal buffer zone, which would be required due to the impervious coverage of twenty-two point nine percent per certificate of survey, and the permeable walkway must be engineered and designed as such.
Thank you. Sue or Rebecca, you have any other comments?
No, not at this time, no.
Any questions for the applicant at this point? Otherwise, we're going to go to our worksheet for the applicant's knowledge. Uh, this worksheet is to help us determine our findings of fact. And any no answer, uh, state statute requires us to deny. So if we answer any of the questions, no, we must deny the variance.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a point of clarification? Uh, we are going to be voting on the proposal with the existing, uh, walkway removed, the new walkway installed with a permeable surface and a eighty-five foot, uh, patio addition to the accessory structure. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's what's being asked for.
Okay. And if, do I further understand it that if the existing walkway was removed and the walkway was installed, uh, with permeable surfaces and the, and the, uh, water-oriented structure and patio did not exceed a hundred and twenty square feet, there would be no permit required? Is that correct?
Correct. Probably correct, is that, yeah?
Um, we got thirty-three square feet is in the bluff. You have to have a.
Oh, yeah.
So the thirty-three square feet that's in, in the bluff is, is the walkway that, that goes in front of the water-oriented structure, um, about halfway down.
We, we allow four-foot walkways, so that shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. All right. Any, any other comments?
I just, thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing that, I don't understand it.
Okay, question number one. Is the variance in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance?
Mr. Chair, I'd say yes, it is. The ordinance allows the expansion of non-conforming structures through the variance process. Outlined in Article eight, County Land Use Ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Anything additional?
I would say no, it doesn't, the, um, it's a property owner's desire to add a hundred and eighteen square foot patio addition to an existing water-oriented accessory structure, um, is, um, not in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance.
Okay. Anything additional? Yeah, do, how are we going to handle this since two people made it, uh, do a roll call on, I guess. Uh, Sue, how would you answer this question?
No.
Rick?
Um, no.
Rebecca?
No.
Rock?
Yes.
And I would say no as well. So the answer to question number one is no. Question number two, is the variance consistent with the comprehensive plan?
I'd say yes, it is. Mr. Chair, protect, preserve, and improve the water quality of the lake's streams and wetlands by minimizing the effects of stormwater runoff with this proposed permeable pavers, walkway, does just that.
Anything additional? Everybody agree? Agree.
Agree.
Agreed.
Question number three. Is a property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the Land Use Order?
Mr. Chair, I would say that that answer should be no because the eighty-five foot addition to the water-oriented accessory structure exceeds the, the maximum allowed by our code of a hundred and twenty square feet.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything additional?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just a correction. It's a hundred and eighteen square foot patio addition.
Oh, I'm sure.
Between the two.
Okay. I, I accept that correction. Anything additional? Everybody agree? Agree.
Agreed.
I agree.
Question number four. Is the need for variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the property owner?
I would say no, Mr. Chair. It's the property owner's desire to have a hundred and eighty-two square foot patio addition to an existing water-oriented accessory structure, um, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything additional? Everybody agree? Agree.
Agreed. Agreed.
Question number five. Will the issuance of a variance maintain the essential character of the locality?
I would say no, there were no, um, existing water-oriented accessory structures exceeding a hundred and twenty square feet as noted during the onsite on four, nine, and twenty.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd say yes, it would because the, the proposed patio is a flat level surface that would have no visual impact from the lake.
Okay. Rebecca, you have anything else?
Uh, I have nothing to add other than, um, I would say no because there are no similar, um, structures in the, in the vicinity.
Okay, will we do a roll call vote on this one as well? Rebecca, you just said no, is that your vote?
Yes, my, my vote is no.
Correct. Sue?
No.
Rick?
No.
Rock?
Yes.
And mine is no, so the answer to that is no. Question number six. Does the need for variance involve more than economic considerations?
Mr. Chair, I'd say the answer to that is yes. The, uh, there's a minimal increase in previous coverage from twenty-two point two to twenty-two point six percent.
Thank you. Anything else? Everybody agree?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Question number seven. What is the township recommendation? What is it?
No comment.
No, no comment. Any other permanent findings? Hearing none, action needed on this application is to approve table or deny?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to deny the variance request to allow a two-hundred-and-six square foot combined patio water-oriented accessory structure. A hundred and twenty square feet is allowed. Uh, to allow a patio in a bluff and to allow, well, we have to approve the dirt moving in a bluff, right?
Uh, there's no patio in the bluff.
Thirty-three square feet.
I, I think, I think what's getting hung up here is the section of walkway that's down by the water is that part of the, of the patio. And so I, I would say just a walkway. So if that's the issue, then we're fine. If, but I, I want to be clear from the applicant, you will not be moving any dirt in the bluff, correct?
Cur- correct. What we are, just so you know, there is a old wood, uh, timber, uh, retaining wall on the other side, in the bluff side of the, um, of the water-oriented structure. We are going to take the wood out and put, um, smaller boulders in for that, for that wood.
Yeah, that would be allowed. Now, obviously, you know that you can't move any dirt more than necessary just to rebuild the wall. No landscaping, nothing. We're, we're clear on that, right?
Yeah, we're clear, we're ver- we're very clear on that.
Okay, so I'd also like to, uh, deny, uh, to include the denial, uh, dirt moving in a bluff.
Okay. So can you restate your motion?
I will. I make a motion to deny the variance request to allow a two-hundred-and-six square foot combined patio water-oriented accessory structure where a hundred and twenty square feet is re, is allowed, to allow a patio in a bluff and to allow dirt moving within a bluff.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second. Been moved by Sue and seconded by Rick. Is there any other discussion? Does the applicant understand what they can do and what they can't do?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none, uh, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, thank you. Sue?
Yeah, aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Rock?
No.
And I vote aye. So, motion passes. Thank you so much, sir.
So just, just so we can, I'm clear with this, the variance, did you just say the variance passed? Or?
The motion passed. The motion passed to deny, uh, the, yeah.
The variance. Okay.
And, and Mike, this is Jake, just another point of clarification. Please speak with staff about how you can move forward without the variances, but essentially, if you still want to build the ramp, y- you could do it with a permit, but you still got to remove the stairway because you only get one, right? So there's just some things to work through there.
Yep, it's just, it's a matter of taking that patio out.
Correct.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, thank you so much, sir. Have a, you have a good evening.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Uh. Sue?
Okay, Mr. Chair, admitting Jack Boudarak and Paul Mackey to the meeting.
Jay.
Oh, that's the agenda.
Good evening.
Hello?
Paul and Jack?
This is Paul. Hi, Jack.
Is Jack with you as well?
Uh, no.
Did you connect it?
I'm in, uh, back there in Jackson.
I don't know.
Yes, that's our agenda.
Why not, but I don't see any people.
Yeah, they need to mute.
Um, yo, uh, this is Jake with staff. You might consider, is it turning off their video? Is that what it is?
I think they're waiting, uh, on the phone too. Uh, if they had a good connection, I think I can.
Who's that right there?
Oh, that's her.
Who?
You guys can turn on.
Becky.
Paul?
Hi, Becky.
There, I think we got it.
Not be admitted to meeting at this time. So please contact the meeting speaker.
Now we have Jack Boudarak and Paul Mackey via team.
Okay, so we, we have Paul Mackey and Jack Boudarak.
Hello.
Is that correct?
Yeah, this is Paul.
There's.
And Jack, are you there?
Who's Jay?
Becky? For some reason, I can't hear.
Yeah.
Let me check this.
There we go. There we go.
Okay, I got the camera off. Turn camera on, won't turn on.
Uh, we can see you.
I'm unmuted now. Becky's gone.
There. I was having problems with the video on that. Okay. It went again. I don't know what's doing that.
So who do we have on the call?
Uh, I'm, Paul Mackey's here on the video.
Okay. And are the Boudaraks on the phone?
Uh, maybe they have it muted and they're not aware of it.
Possibly. Uh, uh, if the Boudaraks are there, we show you as on the call, but we can't hear you. Perhaps your phone is muted. And you can unclick the mute button using your.
Stephanie Hanson. Becky, can you hear me? If you can, wave. Actually, we just went away.
It's not going to show everybody.
Okay, we can't hear you for whatever reason. And I'm sure it's, I'm, I'm very good at this stuff.
The other option would be to hang up this call and just call in via the conference phone. Otherwise, if you click on the little, um, make sure that we're not muted.
So Paul, I know, if Paul could, Paul, I don't know if he can hear me or not.
I can. Yes, I, yeah, I can.
You can't hear anybody, that's the problem. If Mr. Boudarak can't hear any of us.
But go ahead and proceed even though.
I'll go call him.
What are those other times?
Those other guys, good, good question.
I could have called and tell him that you can just call in. So if you could just hold on for.
If you can just hold on for a few minutes here, uh, staff is going to call the Boudarakson. Give them some instructions.
Show more detail, show device.
Sounds good.
Speaker, microphone.
You don't want the microphone.
Hello?
I'm wondering if, when I need you, if you can hear us through the video. Um, the other option would be just to enter a video call, call in to be a conference call member.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Hello? Hello? Jack Boudarak?
Is now joining.
Okay, can the Boudaraks hear us okay?
Very good.
And Paul, you can still hear. That's okay, that happens. And Paul, can you hear?
Yeah, yes, I can.
Okay. Just for the record, my name is Don Hales, I'm the chair of the, uh, Board of Adjustment. I will be facilitating the meeting tonight, but I will be abstaining from voting. So would, uh, Paul and the Boudaraks, please state your name and address for the record.
Which address?
Your mailing address.
Uh, in Louisville?
Yes, yes, Louisville.
Five sixty Sunset Road, Louisville, Kentucky, four oh two oh six, and I'm Barb Boudarak.
And I'm Ja- I'm Jack Boudarak, and I, I live at six-five-nine-seven Nicholas Boulevard, PH eleven, Naples, Florida, three-four-one oh eight.
And we are married.
Okay. And Paul, can you state your name and address for us?
Sure, uh, Paul Mackey with North Sun Construction. Address is seventy-nine-hundred Hastings Road, Baxter, Minnesota, five-six-four-two-five.
Okay, thanks to all of you. Jake, would you be so kind as to read the request into the record for us?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, the applicant, the next applicant is, uh, John Junior and, or Jack, excuse me, and Barbara Boudarak. Agent is Paul Mackey, address is one-five-six-zero-nine Greg Road, Deerwood, Minnesota, five-six-four-four-four. Request is an amendment, there's, well, there's a couple of requests for this item, which are the last two applicants, we're gonna kind of package them together for this purpose. Is to remove a condition from a variance granted in nineteen-eighty-seven that say, that states no other decks or additions Lakeward may be added on this property. And there is six variances. An OHW setback of fifty-three feet to a proposed north or lakeside porch where a hundred feet is required. An OHW setback of fifty-seven feet to a proposed northeast lakeside two-by-sixteen deck, deck addition where a hundred feet is required. A set, an OHW setback of fifty-seven feet to a proposed northwest lakeside deck where a hundred feet is required. An OHW setback of sixty-seven feet to a proposed second level addition to an existing dwelling where a hundred feet is required. An OHW setback of sixty-nine feet to a proposed east side screen porch where a hundred feet is required. And an OHW setback of eighty-nine feet to a proposed east side deck where a hundred feet is required. And this is all to construct a one-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventeen square foot second level addition to existing dwelling. A twelve-by-sixteen north or lakeside deck, a twenty-by-fourteen north lakeside porch, a two-by-sixteen addition. Uh, deck, a twenty-by-twenty east side screen porch, and a twenty-by-twelve east side deck per certificate of survey received on April sixth, two thousand and twenty. So that was quite the mouthful there. We will move on to the survey. This is the property on Bay Lake, a recreation development lake with a hundred-foot setback. I'm gonna zoom in just a bit here. Lot of, lot of details here, here we go. So there is a number of additions on, uh, the building. The, the house is, uh, proposed to have, um, a second floor, uh, not meeting the setback. The deck, there's an existing deck here, nothing changing there. Proposed deck over here, not meeting the setbacks, proposed porch, not meeting the setbacks. I believe this proposed screen porch is not meeting the setbacks, but this proposed, uh, is this lightly? This also part of the variance? Kiki?
You were gonna do an administrative decision for that.
Yeah, I'm doing an administrative decision for the, uh, proposed addition, uh, that is, for all purposes, not part of the setback issue. And, uh, did I miss anything? There was a lot of things going on here. Proposed deck, there we go, that's also part of this proposal, not meeting the setbacks. Uh, in terms of the impervious, it's at sixteen-point-one, it'll go to eighteen-point-four. So not too much of an increase with those previous deck designs. The, uh, comments, Bay Lake Township recommends approval, published in the packet, no comments from the DNR or the Lake Association, no other comments received. That is all. Wasn't there also a, uh, previous variance on this property that allowed?
Yes, but they moved it from.
Right. They, they had, uh, pre- y- yep, that it was fifty-eight, and I believe this is increasing the size.
Increasing size and.
And the encroachment.
Yeah.
So there was, yes, but they're sort of expanding on that.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, ask staff, the two-by-sixteen, is that going on the existing ten-by-sixteen deck? You, it, they're stated here that there's a two-by-sixteen deck addition, is that?
Right up in front.
On this existing, oh, two-by-sixteen, is that on that existing deck?
Oh, there it is. Yep.
Okay.
My mistake.
Okay, just on clarification, thank you.
Okay.
And my question, Mr. Chair, is, is the proposed porch enclosed?
Uh, I think it is.
Well, this, uh, this is Paul, can I answer that one?
Sure, Paul.
Yeah, it's an open porch on three sides, there's gonna be two columns in the two lakeside corners. Uh, it's gonna be roughed, but the sides will be open.
Okay. Covered porch.
Covered porch. And the one to the east is a screen porch.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Jake. Does the applicant have any new information that has not been previously submitted?
Uh, no, everything, uh, Jake stated seems to be accurate.
All right, thank you. Uh, we had no public comment on this, um, so we don't need to discuss that. Uh, we did it onsite. Rebecca, would you like to do the onsite report? Rebecca? Sue, would you like to do that?
I'm sorry, I ha- I had you on mute because I had a dog that was being naughty, I'm sorry.
You want?
I was barking, I forgot to take it off. Okay.
You wanna do the onsite, or should I have Sue do it?
Oh, I can do it.
Okay.
On April ninth, two thousand and twenty, we did an onsite with, uh, Mr. Hales, myself, Rick Skogan, Sue Maski, and staff. And we made several, several, um, uh, observations during that onsite. Uh, first of all, there are similar structures and similar setbacks in the neighborhood, some are even closer, uh, to the lake. Uh, the stable shoreline is evident, there appears that there is not currently a normal buffer in place. The property is currently molded, uh, to the shoreline. Uh, there is a natural retention area present on the property. Stormwater management proposal also indicates that stormwater will be directed away from the lake via gutters towards that retention area. Uh, a stormwater management plan will be required with proposed impervious coverage over fifteen percent. And it was also noted that an existing small garage will be removed, and there will be no net increase in bedrooms, uh, proposed with the expansions.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. Anybody have any other comments from the onsite? Rebecca or Rick?
No, thank you.
And, does anybody have any questions for Paul or the Boudaraks? Hearing none, we have a worksheet that we do to help us summarize our findings of fact. Uh, by state statute, we need to go through this to summarize those, and no answers to any of the questions mean we must deny the, the variance request. With that in mind, let's go to the worksheet.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, would you, uh, can we handle those as a package deal to remove the amendment and?
I think we need to do the amendment first.
Okay, so we'll separate that out as a separate question.
Do we even need to do the questions for that, or can we, we can just take a motion to re, yeah. So would somebody like to make that motion? What we're doing here is removing the mo- the condition that was put on back when?
Nineteen-eighty-seven.
Nineteen-eighty-seven. So we're gonna be removing that condition.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend, um, to remove condition number one from the ten-seven nineteen-eighty-seven variance, um, that states no other decks or additions Lakeward may be added on this property.
Second. Been moved by Sue and seconded by Rock to remove that condition. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Sue?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Rebecca? I'm muted, Rebecca.
Aye.
Rock?
Aye.
And I abstain. So motion carries. Now let's go to the, let's go to the, uh, the variance, the worksheet for the current variance request. Question number one, is the variance in harmony with the purposes and intent of the ordinance?
Mr. Chair, I would say that it is, the ordinance allows for the expansion of non-conforming structures through the variance process outlined in Article eight of the County Land Use Ordinance.
Is there anything additional?
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to add that this is an existing lot of record in the plot of eastern in the state, Sun Bay Lake, which was established in nineteen forty-six.
Okay. Anything else? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Agree.
Question number two, is a variance consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Mr. Chair, I would say yes, it is, uh, protect, preserve, and improve the quality of growing county lakes, um, by minimizing the effects of stormwater runoff with the stormwater plan.
Thank you. Anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Agree.
Question number three, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the land use ordinance?
Mr. Chair, I would say that it is, they are, there are similar structures and land uses in the neighborhood with similar, if not closer setbacks, as noted during the Board of Adjustment onsite on four-nine-two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, Rick. Anything additional?
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to add that proposed additions are to the side and Lakeward with a minimal encroachment on Bay Lake.
Okay. Anything else? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Agree.
Question number four, is the need for a variance due to circumstance is unique to the property and not created by the property owner?
Mr. Chair, I would say yes, it is, there, uh, lot was created prior to any zoning regulations established in nineteen-seventy.
Okay, thanks, Rick.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to add that it's an existing non-conforming dwelling located fifty-seven feet from the ordinary high water level of Bay Lake.
Thank you. Anything else? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Agree.
Question number five, will the issuance of a variance maintain the essential character of the locality?
Mr. Chair, I would say yes, it will, there are similar structures and land use patterns and use of property in the vicinity of the request, as noted on the onsite visit on, um, April ninth, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, Rebecca. Anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Question number six, is the need for a variance involve more than economic considerations?
Mr. Chair, I'd say yes, it does, the implementation of a stormwater management plan will help protect the water quality of Bay Lake.
Thank you, Sue. Anything additional? Everybody agree?
Agree.
Agree.
Question number seven, township recommendation was to approve. Any other further findings? Hearing none, action needed on this application then is to approve, table, or deny.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation or a, a motion to approve the variance for John Junior and Barbara Boudarak for a variance for an OHW setback of fifty-three feet to a new proposed north lakeside porch where a hundred feet is required. An OHW setback of fifty-seven feet to a new proposed northeast lakeside two-by-sixth deck addition where a hundred feet is required. A OHW setback of fifty-seven feet to a proposed northwest lakeside deck where a hundred feet is required. An OHW setback of sixty-seven feet to a proposed second level addition to an existing dwelling where a hundred feet is required. An OHW setback of sixty-nine feet to a new proposed east side screen porch where a hundred feet is required. And a OHW setback of eighty-nine feet to a new proposed east side deck where a hundred feet is required, all this to construct a twelve-hundred-and-seventeen square foot second level addition to an existing dwelling. A twelve-by-sixteen north lakeside deck, a twenty-by-fourteen north lakeside porch. A two-by-sixteen addition to the northeast lakeside deck. A twenty-by-twenty east side screen porch, and a twenty-by-twelve east side deck per certificate of survey received four-six of two thousand and twenty.
We have a motion by Rick to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
So we have a, a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Sue?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Rock?
Aye.
And again, Don Hales abstained, so congratulations, the motion passes.
Can I say thank you now?
Thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.
You too. Thank you very much.
Yep, stay safe. Jack Boudarak?
Is now exiting.
Is Paul too?
Yep, everybody's up.
Any matters not on the agenda. I would just like to, again, thank staff for an awesome job. I know it's a lot more work for you guys, and it's actually a little rough work for us. Because of these. Kiki?
Yeah.
Remove an iPad. I'm gonna call this, oh, careful.
Your greatness, it's working.
With spoiling.
Gonna be iPad.
He'll expect it all the time.
I, I kind of wa- I'm kind of in agreement with Don, the book is better than the editor.
Don't you agree with me ever? Oh, uh, when are the onsites?
Yeah, we're still recording.
The seventh, right?
A week from today.
Okay.
Okay.
Then how many?
Then our next meeting is going to be different?
We don't know. Um, what I did find out tonight is that, um, they extended it.
The governor extended today, didn't he?
Yep, and so did the county follow suit. So this is gonna continue till at least May eighteenth.
Okay, I'd say, expect it'll be similar. The only thing that'll change is it might be livestreamed during.
We're working on that.
Yeah, okay.
But we'll be driving, we'll be driving separately again, right?
Yes.
Okay.
You can move to adjourn, Becky.
So moves.
Okay, we are adjourned. Have a good evening, everybody.
You too.
Do you know the Boudarak?
So we all drive around.